My call is meeting of the Salem City Council to order for January 23rd. If the clerk, or the clerk, sorry, the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Kaiser?
Present.
Counselor Anderson?
Here.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor McCoy?
Here.
Counselor Osik? Counselor Cook?
Present.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Bennett?
Here, and please note that Counselor Osik is here, he's just out of the room.
Okay.
Okay, let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor McCoy, do we have any additions or deletions?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor, I, we have two, I move approval of the additions to the agenda.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Tell me what they are.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We've got two, 3.2A, which is authorizing a transfer of appropriation authority in the airport fund and general fund for matching a Federal Aviation Administration Improvement Program grant. Basically, we've got the FAA coming in saying they will give us 90 percent of the money to repave our primary runway at the airport, they're ready to do it now, and it's either give them the matching 10 percent, which will come from contingency funds in the budget at both the airport and the general fund, and so for our $390,000, we get $3.9 million paving project done. 5. B is a 2017 City Council Committee, and we're basically, we're basically in this one, the motion is to appoint Mayor Bennett and Counselor Lewis to the Hospital Facility Authority Board, and all other, there's a variety of other mayoral appointments that are included in this, but the real motion is to appoint those two folks to the hospital Authority Board.
Well, the revision was to change Counselor Kaiser.
And then we had a revision, yeah, putting, making Counselor Kaiser and
It's Kaiser.
Kaiser. I knew that, I was listening to him.
That's like Cost Waller.
Cable Regulatory, on the Cable Regulatory Commission, Counselor Kaiser is moved from an alternate to a real member. That's it.
Alternates are real members. Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, any counsel?
We need a vote.
Oh, sorry, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Any counselor comments? Counselor Anderson?
Well, thank you, I noted the shocked look on your face, Mayor Bennett.
No, I was surprised.
I just want to say that on Saturday, my wife Jessica and I attended the Women's March here, it was extremely well-attended, estimates from, you know, several thousand, I would say, two to four thousand, a lot of people there, local speakers, including our own Kara Kaiser, as well as BJ Anderson, who spells her name the right way, who has been here before the council, and then also Shalaswa Bushnell Cryer, all local people all had terrific speeches, and the theme of it really was, we need to stick together here in Salem, we need to be an exclusive welcoming community here in Salem, and that is consistent with the steps that, stances that the council has taken throughout, at least my time on the council and before, so I thought it was a wonderful event, and it brought community together, and I was glad to be there, and I was glad that Counselor Kaiser gave a very excellent speech.
Great. Counselor Kaiser?
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to add that the event organizers worked quite a bit with the police here, and that went very smoothly. Initially, the march was just going to take place on the sidewalks, because they thought just a few hundred people, but then when it turned out to be, I heard the final count is about 4,200 people, they thought, well, we can't keep people all on the sidewalk, it's going to be really difficult, so they worked with the police to shut off the streets, and that was really well-received, the police were fantastic, there were a lot of marchers that thanked them as well along the way, and I did too, and so that was, it was excellent to see the community that was built through that.
Yeah, very good, well, it was certainly, congratulations to those who participated and to those who put it together, and it certainly, the folks conducted themselves very well, and it clearly had a great message for all participants, so thank you very much. Whom I miss, there you are.
I was just going to say, Mayor Bennett, that while I was unable to attend because of birthdays this week, it's been a very big birthday week for us, we did attend the MLK rally and march, and we're also impressed at the coordination between the city and the organizers, it was wonderful, and having two little ones in tow, it was fantastic to have the support and for them to see our community and what we hold to be important.
Very good. Any other comments, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, two events, one, that's coming up, and that is a reminder of your work session this coming Monday, January 30th at 5:30 here in this room, to discuss strategic planning, and for council to engage in the strategic planning process that's been underway. Second, some actually events that I think are in the past, although perhaps not, and that is the really community effort on the warming centers, that we've had 17 nights so far this winter, compared to last winter, we had four, and that is an incredible load for a volunteer effort to carry, and there are several people, agencies I want to acknowledge this evening, one, first is the Community Action Agency, which served as the coordinating body, the First Christian Church, which made a building, they owned the former State Department of Energy building available for use, and I should have said, we've, the warming centers averaged about 150 a night over those 17 nights. The City of Salem, specifically the Fire Department and Chief Niblock, and our Facilities Division, making the O'Brien Site, the site the city is leasing available for use by the Union Gospel Mission, and the Union Gospel Mission and Interfaith Hospitality Network and the Salvation Army for their contributions, the Willamette Valley Yellow Cab for providing free rides to volunteers, if recall, on several of those evenings, not only was it cold, but we had freezing rain, snow, or freezing rain in the forecast, and many of the, well, I shouldn't say many, volunteers were very appreciative of that service provided by the Yellow Cab. Downtown Starbucks for providing coffee, and as one of the volunteers, I appreciated the coffee. Robertson Motors and the Congregations Help People, Congregations Help People are also some key volunteer organizations, I wanted to share that with council and also provide some public recognition for those agencies, organizations, and companies, no, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on then to, there are no proclamations, no presentations, but we do have one person signed up for public comment, Mr. Krebs.
Mayor Bennett, I'm here on behalf of the Salem Kaiser Transit Board, and I serve as president of that board right now, and I'm here to extend greetings to the new council, and sort of ask if there might be some ways that we can work together to solve some of the mobility problems in our city, basically, we don't have Saturday, Sunday, and evening bus service that we essentially need, and so we would like to work with the council and maybe have a joint work session where we can develop some strategies, and also better understand each other and what our goals are, and work together. I'd also like to thank Mayor Bennett for your comments and concerns about our transit situation here in town, and I'm really here, don't want to talk a lot, I just want to open the dialogue between the council and the Transit Board to see if we can work together to better serve our community, so, thank you.
That's great, thank you, and as you know, we've spoken about this briefly, we will be working with you, pulling together, I think, a broad, along with the council, a broader community group to really talk about the transit situation, it's, as you know, better than any of us, one that needs full attention from the community, so thank you very much, we will, we will make sure to take you up on this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else want to address the council? Okay. We'll move to the consent calendar, Mr. President.
I move approval of the consent calendar with the following polls, 3.3A by Counselor Anderson, and 3.3F by Counselor Lewis.
Second. Second by Nanki.
Counselor McCoy, do you want to tell us what all's there?
I am happy to, Mr. Mayor. 3.3B is a purchase of a, and sale agreement with, for the acquisition of property located at 4250 Mandy Avenue Southeast, this is a piece of property that sits directly downhill from a large property to the south that slopes, and the water drains right to this area and floods this and six or seven other homes in the area. The city has done some work on the property to alleviate the flooding, it was not adequate, so they're basically saying that purchase the property to do the stormwater facilities that they need to deal with this, and then at that point, we'll see if that remains a rental, we sell it, somebody can re-inhabit it, or whether we have to knock, take it down, it's just city property. That's what that is.
This is one that we've seen a kind of slideshow on.
We've seen the slideshow, we've seen the river running through there in the winter, yes.
The water comes down the hill for a hill.
Remember which one you're, okay?
3.3C is, is again, surplus property sale at 1660 Snowbird Court Northwest, and this involves property that was owned by the city for access to a proposed city park that has since gone off the books, and is not going to be built in West Salem, so it was surplus property, it was put out for bid, minimum bid was $100,000, the winning bid was $160,000, and so we will be selling that, but it needs, it needs council approval to do so. 3.3D is for utility funding for low-income assistance, the Low Income Assistance Program, asking to approve 10,000 utility funds to match private donations to the low-income and consistent program, private donations come basically from folks that are adding to their monthly payment, contributing to help those in need, the program does help folks that are having, are struggling to meet those payments, you have to be 18 years of age, at least, at or below 30 percent of median income, and cannot be receiving housing assistance.
And this is the first time we'll be matching.
And this is the first time we'll be matching that, and once you're qualified, a qualified customer may receive assistance of up to $150 in a calendar year, 2061 families received assistance in, through, from 2008 through the end of 2016, so, this is the first time we do that, it was, it was placed in the utility rate proposal that we just passed in October of 2016, still need city approval to do this.
Okay, any questions?
Got one more.
Oops, I'm sorry.
3.3E is an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Military Department Office of Emergency Management, and this basically is entering into a memorandum, an agreement with those folks to replace an intergovernmental agreement which expired December 31st of last year, and basically, we provide, they've got more acronyms here, so I'm trying to, the geographic information systems mapping data for, from our 911 system that basically gives them master street address guides that they need if they're going to, you know, provide the emergency assistance when they need it, so this intergovernmental agreement will repay the Willamette Valley Communication Center for the cost of providing that information to them, that's it.
Okay, any question on these items, yes, Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, just for the record, I want to make sure that minutes from the January 9th, 3.1 on the agenda, were not in the packet.
That's, they will be, those minutes are not on the agenda, they'll be on the next agenda.
Counselor Anderson, is that okay, Counselor Lewis, we had that explained to us this morning, so we asked about it as well, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, the, just so I understand, I think I'm correct in this, the $160,000, will go back to the Parks Fund?
Counselor Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director, I believe those, that property was acquired with Parks SDCs, so they will go back to Parks SDCs.
Okay, great, yes, Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, on 3.3B, on the property on Mandy, I was out and worked with staff on that originally, just to try to mitigate that, I was contacted during the purchase negotiations by email asking, or voicemail to call, and I sent Director Fernandez in to intercede, so I never communicated actively with the property owner.
Okay, good. Any other? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, we have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to special orders of business. Counselor Nanki, you have 5A, it looks like?
I think you're up 5A. You're up.
That's that council policy export.
Oh, excellent. We'll let it load up on the screen, I move that council amend policy export to modify the requirements for property owners outside the city limits to connect to city water or sewer services as follows, on the two instances where the sentence reads, the property is developed contiguous to city limits and a water main is available, strike at the property line to serve existing uses.
Okay, Anderson seconds, any questions or comments?
Well, just to speak to that briefly, at our previous meeting, we had the one where it was down the street just a little bit, this gives staff more leeway, I mean, it could be 200 feet away and real easy, or 40 feet away, and like up a straight cliff, so rather than be at the property line, just it is readily available to provide the service, and they, again, that's still consistent with the need to fill out an annexation agreement and what have you as well.
Okay, great. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. 5B, we'll move the staff recommendation. This is the appointments to the various committees, I think all of you know, I visited with each of you, trying to get these to fit into your schedules as well as interests, I hope I came close, if I haven't, we'll just continue to talk about it, and we'll continue to work, and I think I caught most of the interest that folks had, as well as the time that you all have available, and I learned some things as we did that, in terms of some timing changes that I think we can make over, over a period of time, to make sure we make all committees available to everybody without having you all out of the house every night, we can do that, but we won't, okay? The other, do I also do the resolution, is that part of this? Yeah, and part of the recommendation is the resolution, appointing myself and Counselor Lewis to the Hospital Facility Authority, which is kind of a pro-form activity, the way the funding apparently works, I've not been on this committee, maybe you can explain it, Counselor Lewis, as to what this is.
Probably not very well, but the city's involvement with the hospital facility is historical, and there are two seats on their board for the city council, usually it's the mayor and one council member, and as a new person on that, that's about all I know, except for they meet at the hospital, and I got to remember to bring breadcrumbs because it's way back in the back, and it's 7 o'clock in the morning.
And the city attorney can explain what they do, once they're there at 7 o'clock in the morning.
And he could have interrupted me, but he didn't.
So the Facility Authority basically creates the ability to bond for the hospital, and for, not just the hospital, but for other entities within the district, basically, such as recently, there was the farm worker, Yakima Valley Farm Workers Health Clinic that went through the hospital facility, and the council actually had to approve an element of that, but it's basically for hospital facilities, hence the name.
And it's created by statute, creature of statute.
Counselor Nanki?
If I can just want to add one piece to that, because I used to actually serve in that, and it was the two counselors.
What haven't you served on?
It was, it was the counselor in where the hospital was, and then the West Salem counselor, because there was only one at the time, and I think Mayor Peterson might have been the first to actually, and I think based on timing, when, when you could actually get to a meeting, and it's like, once a year, was a breakfast meeting, so.
Okay, any questions, comments, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now, Counselor Anderson, 3.3A.
Thank you, I move the staff recommendation.
Who seconded, who did it? Ah, Counselor Kaiser.
I pronounced it right that time, just letting you know.
Go ahead.
Thank you, I had an opportunity to talk with Kimberly Fitzgerald of the, our HPO as referred to in the language, and I also see that Mr. Bonnet is here, who's the engineer who actually gave us the memo, I just have a few questions, and either one of you who would answer that, could answer that, it'd be helpful to me. My first question is, how do you determine, I'm looking at summary and background, how did we determine that objects found in the public right-of-way are generally of lower value than objects not found in the public right-of-way?
Kimberly Fitzgerald, Historic Preservation Officer for the City of Salem, so we consulted with the State Historic Preservation Office, the state archaeologists and their staff to develop three categories of objects, and the defining factors, they could all potentially be found in the right-of-way, all three categories, but they have different, depending on when they were created originally, and whether they're what we call historic, which in your staff report, there's examples of ones that are what we call historic, bricks, glass, pipe, concrete, that's a category one type of artifact that could be potentially found. The category two artifact or object is very narrowly defined as remnants or large sections of street car rail or railroad track rail, and we have maps of those, those should be included in your staff report. The category three are not known, and they could be potentially prehistoric, Native American in origin, and those we, in consultation with the tribes, have a very different treatment.
Okay, thank you, that leads to my next question, if I may, when I'm looking at all the whereases, and probably about, I don't know, the 13th one on page two of the memorandum of understanding, says, whereas federally recognized tribes have been consulted and invited to concur, well, those to me seem like two different things, consulted is consulted, invited is invited, so what exactly has been the contact with the tribes, and have they specifically been contacted about this issue as opposed to other issues with relating to archaeological finds and that sort of thing?
Yes, we, again, in coordination with the Oregon State Historic Preservation Office, and actually the Commission on Indian Affairs, they directed us which tribes we should be consulting with.
And you did consult with them?
And those, and yes, and to be specific.
Okay, terrific. My next question, and this really, I think, gets to the heart of the concerns that I had, because when I first read it, it just looks like, well, any construction that the city is doing, and any right-of-way that the city has, we could follow the stream-of-procedure, and I, I had some concerns about that, but then I read things, and I'm looking at page 10 of the MOU, and what it sounds like is, I'll tell you, there's a paragraph there, and I don't need to read the whole thing, but it says, this agreement applies to projects that do not, I say do not, have the potential for deep ground disturbance, so to me, deep ground disturbance means, oh, just say hypothetically, you might be wanting to sink something for a supporting structure, for a bridge, maybe, but that situation is not covered by this agreement, is that correct?
That's correct.
So what is really covered is if you're, and you give a lot of examples, you're putting in a sidewalk, and you discover something, or you're, you're putting in a stop, a stoplight or something where you have to dig down, or you're repaving a street, so it's things that basically are applying to items that have already been constructed, repair and maintenance, or additions to those items, like a bike path, or a sidewalk, or something like that, is that understanding correct?
That is, that's correct.
Okay, then, I appreciate the definition of categories, and having had that, I love your street, your street car map, too, that is here, and railroads, and having had that, then, I'm satisfied that this is, especially now that we know what it is, really is related to sort of minor improvements that are connected, and of course, those need to go through as soon as possible, so thank you very much, Ms. Fitzgerald.
Thank you.
Counselor Kaiser?
I just wanted to add it all into the comments, excuse me, that this is actually, this is a really big deal for the city to have this MOU, the State Historic Preservation Office has a couple of these around the city, and I can't remember offhand which ones, but, but a lot don't, and if you know archaeological laws, what's required for construction projects is for a registered archaeologist to be on-site to monitor things, and if something is inadvertently discovered, and it can be as simple as a nail that's 100 years old, we have to stop work, you have to document it, I mean, there's a lot of things to go through, so I think this is going to help streamline those projects where there is a risk of running into archaeological debris that maybe isn't eligible for the national register, so I think just kudos to our Historic Preservation Program and Public Works also for working through this process, so I'm definitely in favor of it.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes.
I've never said yes before.
I like yes. Counselor Lewis?
On agenda item 3.3F, I move that the city consider applying for a safer grant after completion of the updated, update to the Fire Department's 2011 Standards of Cover, City of Salem Fiscal Year 2017/18 Budget, and City of Salem Strategic Plan.
Second.
Second by Nanki.
That was original staff recommendation, correct?
Yes.
This is, would you like to go over this then, Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, actually, if I could start, I've got at least one question of staff.
Let's, clarify for just one moment, your motion, is this the first one? There's two there, is the first one, the staff recommendation?
Yeah, it's not the alternative recommendation, it's the recommendation.
Okay.
The question is, has there been any work done yet on the application grant for this year?
Fire Chief Mike Niblock, yes, we have done some prep work because of the short timeline, but we have not completed the, the whole process yet.
Okay, if I could speak to my motion now, I, this is actually one of the more difficult places I've been in, I'll have to choose my words carefully, but in the staff report, it says that if we were to apply for this and get it, we would open up Fire Station 11, which is the one in West Salem, Ward 8. is the one in West Salem, Ward 8, and as we know, that was open and then closed a few years ago. And there's nothing I heard more for the last three years than, when do we get the fire station open for good? And that for good is always part of the question. My concern is that the way the grant is now formulated, it's 75% for the first two years and then 35% for the next year, with an obligation that the city pick up the rest, so we're talking about an additional $80,000 a year, and my concern is that that's, I don't know if that's sustainable or not, and the worst fear I have is to open the fire station again
Close it down.
And then close it, because after that, not much credibility left. And there's just too many uncertainties, the report that needs to be finished, the current budget, the strategic planning, it just, it concerns me to the point where I am doing the staff recommendation, even though that precludes even the opportunity to open up Station 11 this year, but I have full confidence that the city will grow to the point where we can justify it shortly.
Counselor Nanki.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a question of staff, quick on that, do we actually utilize that station as an ambulance staging location?
We do not. The ambulance is staged in West Salem, down by On Wallace Road, by the gas station there, by Hawaiian Time, that's their staging location in West Salem, and the reason for that is that's the best travel route to get to most of the calls in West Salem.
Because I know when we were running the 40-hour, originally at Station 11, it helped with that response time for medical emergencies, did it not?
That's correct, but when you look at the totality of all the calls in West Salem and the calls they take back across the river, putting it in the far northwestern corner of the city, the ambulance resource I'm speaking of, that moves it away from all the bulk of the calls in the core of West Salem, so it's a balance between, when the engine company was there, there was an engine company and an ambulance, and so we spread the resources out, you can't do that with one resource.
Okay, thanks.
Chief Niblock, I had a couple of questions on this one, too. Do you need another engine company?
Let me just talk a little bit about our ever-increasing call volume, and we'll talk more about this during the budget. Last year, we went up 2,105 calls. If you recall, I made a best guess last budget that we'd go up 2,200, so I was off by about 95. That's almost double from what we increased the fiscal year before that, so we ran 22,000 calls last year. The addition of that 2,100 calls is about what an engine company is capable of handling, staying within what the parameters we would like to see for an engine company, so we added an engine company, and we added an engine company's worth of calls to the system, so we're treading water, just like we were last year, and we're going to continue to tread water. The problem is if our call volume continues to go up the way that it is, the responsibility to meet the responses is going to go down.
Well, is there any indication we'll see call volumes go down this year?
No, I don't think so. The last five years, we've seen a pretty steady increase, the last two years, we've seen double-digit increases in our call volume, so we had 1,100 the year before, we had 2,100 this year, if we stay on that path, we may be above 3,000 next year.
Well, one of the, and I hear what Counselor Lewis is saying, but, and I want to, and I'm sure I'll agree with him, but I am, when will we know whether we can sustain another engine company, whether it's Station 11 or anywhere else? I mean, I want to understand, because I know Counselor Lewis is, and other counselors are troubled by this, we go through this budget every year and it's always a problem, but this is a life safety issue, this isn't, this isn't having a fire truck to park, this is a life safety issue, because your call volume, I think you're saying, really is going to go up, so when will we know? When can we tell it's time? Because we've been asking this for, Counselor Lewis and I have asked this for several years, looking for this magic date.
I think council will know upon completion of the strategic plan, because that would provide the clear, this is a priority and we need to make the resources available to sustain the fire service levels at a level that is sustainable and that protects the city.
The question, I guess, Mr. Manager, the part I want to kind of understand is, whenever we use the term "sustainable" in this discussion, we have a problem because we don't know when sustainability in funding has been hit. It's a moving target, it feels like, and what I'm trying to understand, I mean, I think we'll have a strategic planning session, we'll do goal sessions, it is a council goal, life service is a fundamental job of the city, this isn't like city optional, this is city must-do kind of stuff, it's public safety, that's the part I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure, I think it's top of the goals, I don't think that's a question, the question is, when's it sustainable? When can we say we can open this or we can have this added company to meet the call volumes, and when will that be, when do we pull the trigger on that? When's that happen? That's my, it was same question I've had for years on these fires. We pulled the trigger last year, we've been able to open Station 8, able to have the additional service, engine company, and as you pointed out, call volumes ate it up, just right away, and we saw that in the numbers last year, we saw what was happening up there in that part of town, so I'm just concerned, I really am. This continues to be a problem, and it's down in southwest Salem as well, I think there are spots down there that make it very uncomfortable, but not having that extra company to float, if nothing else, to float, you know what I mean? I mean, am I reading this wrong, or?
It gives you depth of coverage, absolutely.
Okay. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you. Five, six years ago, when we were first talking about Station 11, it was running 40-hours and your recommendation was to keep it at 40-hours because the call volume wasn't high enough, is, if it were to open today, it's been several years now, would you still recommend it as a 40 or a 24-hour?
No, I'd recommend it as a 24-hour, yeah. When you, and I'll have more information when we bring our budget presentation back about total call volume and numbers, but we're seeing growth in West Salem, when we cited that station in 2006, when we picked that area for the growth area of the city, we've seen schools built over there, we've seen commercial buildings, we've seen residential, we've seen increase in population, and we're seeing an increase in call volume, and there's really one engine company over there now that's handling that entire burden, and they're at the point where their reliability is going down because they're on another call and they can't handle that subsequent call, and that means Engine 1 goes across the bridge to take the next call, and Engine 2 goes across the bridge to take the third call, and it just has an impact on the core of town, so it's a domino effect, but we have seen pretty substantial growth year after year after year in our call volume.
Depending, because is there any way we could look at just putting a medical response team there, a two-person?
We are in the process of doing some analysis for our Standards of Cover document, we are about 80% done with the data. When we look at the medical-only responses, the medical-only responses are, we're meeting those 98% of the time, so we don't need another ambulance, we need a fire truck, and I think we had that discussion at the last budget process. We're not covering that section of town with a fire engine, which doesn't allow us to have the firefighting responses and the critical emergency responses we need in the period of time to get there in a critical emergency and have our toolbox with us. Our ambulance system is doing great, it's that we don't cover the dirt out there in West Salem, and we need to cover that dirt and have that foundation to be able to look at additional resources we may have, and we are doing some analysis now to see what are the possibilities that are out there, we're scouring other departments, we're looking at other departments our size, what are they doing, are they doing something different? I will tell you that our response Standards of Cover is the national best practice, this is what cities our size are doing. There are some unique things that people are doing out there, they haven't been proven out as being cost-effective yet or really making that much difference in the system, but the system model that we have in place, but that's not to say that we're not looking at other things.
Sure, all right, thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Yeah, okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Okay. Yes, sorry, Tom.
I'm glad that Kristina Namburi came tonight, because I wouldn't want to have her come all the way down for no purpose, so I do have a question, IT Director Namburi, and I guess it's a question and a comment, I'd like to say I really appreciate all the work you're doing on the website, and here's a problem that I have all the time when I get on the website, I can't get somebody's phone number in an easy way, and Counselor Lewis is chuckling, so I hope that in this reworking of things, and I know you're working with everybody else, but if there could be some, I mean, I've got to go find the department, you know, the individual departments, and there's that little plus you check on, and then things drop down, and then maybe you can find the number, if there would be some way where the phone numbers could be more easily obtained, that would be great, especially for those of us who actually use that thing you pick up and talk into as opposed to hitting things with our fingers that are too big.
Kristina Namburi, IT Director. So, with the new site, what we have done, we have like the centralized database where we are actually managing all the contacts and the phone numbers and the email addresses. So, I would like for Laura Singer, our web architect, to come and comment on that.
Laura Singer, web developer, City Salem IT Department. Yes, so one thing that we've done is we're trying to simplify finding the contact information, so we have set up a central database where we can manage that, so if a phone number recurs on several pages, let's say there's a specific staff person who's the contact for multiple topics, we can manage that from one location if their phone number changes or the staff person changes, we can update that in one spot, but it can still be visible on all 15 pages, so that if you're on a page and it says, "This is the contact person, this is who you need to contact," it can be right there every single time.
Well, that's terrific, I appreciate that, because I spend a lot of my time taking up Aaron's time to call her so she can then send me to Melissa or whoever else I need to speak with, so that'd be great, that we could find those numbers.
Yes, some of the community feedback that we've received is that people use our website as a tool to find a way to contact the city, whether that's a staff person or a city counselor, so we've been trying to make it more prominent on the pages and leave it in a consistent spot, so no matter what webpage you're on, if there's a phone number, it's highly visible, if the user taps it or clicks it, it will, if they're on a smartphone, it will automatically dial it, so no more fumbling with a screen over here and a phone over here, so we're making a lot of modern enhancements to allow for that.
I'm going to take you back, though, a couple of years in, when we used to have White Pages and a, we'd call 411 or whatever it was to get information, what I discovered being the Ward 1 City Councilor was, the first number that comes up is the Ward 1 City Counselor's number, and what I, I learned a great deal about the city, particularly its buying practices, was people tried to sell me stuff that I just couldn't use. Is there some way to get the telephone book companies to give myself, Counselor Kaiser, and any future counselors a break on this thing? We buy a lot of stuff for the city, right?
I just got one of those today.
Did you? Yeah.
Buying the software.
Is there some way to fix that? It's not a computer thing, it's a White Pages thing, but it...
Yeah, I'm going to let Kristina Namburi answer that one.
Yeah, let Kristina fix it.
I'm still trying to understand the question, could you please, so?
What happens when people call information, they are told the phone number of the city, they say, "I want to reach somebody at City of Salem," the number that pops up is the phone number for the City Counselor in Ward 1. So I spent nine years dealing with generally sales and purchasing questions, and now Counselor Kaiser has inherited that number and she's starting to get those calls.
We'll definitely look into that, it can be fixed, yeah.
Would you get that? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yes, Counselor Kaiser.
Just a quick question, I think I know the answer, but is this going to be mobile responsive?
Yes, it is, yeah. So, it's actually, the way we design the website is called responsive design, so irrespective of what device you, you know, use to look at the website, it actually is compatible to that, so it is, you can use iPad, you can use iPhone, Samsung, any device that you use, you see exactly the same content, yes, without truncating anything.
So like, the size of the screen doesn't matter, it'll adjust?
So, if I don't have a laptop at home and I use my mobile phone, I can find the same information that someone does on their laptop.
Case.
Yeah, actually, yeah, the design is so much user-friendly on mobile devices, actually, it's a lot easier to kind of scroll through and then so.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. Ah, Counselor Cook.
Krista, did you, it sounds like you've been using the feedback that you've received from the city website and working very carefully, how easy is it to make future adjustments based on continuing feedback? Because whenever there's a launch, there's always something and we can make moves for improvement, is this something that is done in-house, is there?
Yes, so the entire website has been redesigned using internal resources, so we have a code project team, web publishers and the approvers that worked on this together, so we got the feedback like a couple of times from the community members, and even in the future, the goal is to take that continuous feedback from the community and make changes accordingly, so we are looking for that feedback to make those changes, and it shouldn't be that much of work, once we go live with it, we should easily change.
And is it going to roll into the current community alert model that people have on their cell phone for the push notifications with flooding and whatnot?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, any further comments then on other information items? Okay, very good. We'll move on to ordinances, first reading.
Right, Ordinance Bill Number 2117, an ordinance relating to the city tax on the sale of marijuana items, amending SRC 32.025 and 32.065.
Counselor McCoy.
I move that we conduct first reading of Ordinance Bill Number 217, which amends SRC Chapter 32 to conform the city's marijuana sales tax collection and enforcement procedures with state law.
Second. Second by Counselor Lewis. Any discussion, questions, comments? Do you want to explain this?
Yes, at our last meeting, the council authorized staff to execute an agreement with the Oregon Department of Revenue to allow the Department of Revenue to administer the city's collection and enforcement program as permitted by state law for its, the marijuana sales tax. The Department of Revenue came back to the city and asked it to amend its regulations for the administration of the marijuana sales tax, to give it express authority to DOR to administer the program, and two, to conform the city's collection and enforcement procedures to state law, and that's what this does.
Great, okay. Okay, ready to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. We'll move to second readings.
Okay, Ordinance Bill Number 2116, an ordinance relating to a change to the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan Map designation for 560 Glen Creek Road Northwest and 585 to 635 Ninth Street Northwest. Counselor McCoy.
Aye.
Counselor Osick.
Aye.
Counselor Cook.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Kaiser.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Nanki.
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, motion passes, let's see, we have one more here, it looks like, one more?
Okay, Ordinance Bill Number 117, an ordinance relating to a change to the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan Map designation for an 11.88 acre property at the 700 block of Auto Group North Avenue Northeast. Counselor Osick. Counselor Osick.
Aye.
Counselor Cook.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Kaiser.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Nanki.
Aye.
Counselor McCoy.
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Passes. Public comment. Count, did you want to speak to the council, or are you here to talk?
No, sir, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak to the council?
It's a new record.
Excellent, excellent. And with, there's no objection, we are adjourned.